We do. Good afternoon. This is the 21st meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council, and it's now called the order. Members, the council, due to us being a meeting virtually, please note that I recognize you by saying your name and that you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please still state your name and then begin to speak. In lieu of invocation, I'll ask everyone to bow their heads for a moment of quiet reflection. At this point, we're going to turn it over to and say, state the pledge of allegiance, if you could. If you have a flag in your house or computer, just turn to your flag and state the pledge of allegiance. At this point, we're going to have roll call. Madam Clerk, if you could, please call the roll.
President Mosley, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bula, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Can you give me one moment, please?
Yes, Madam Clerk. You run the show. Just for the listening audience, we're having a slight technical issue that we're working on, but we should be up and running in a few seconds.
My apologies. Mr. President, the Journal of the October 18th, 2021 proceedings are on the desk, are on the council member's desk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Without objection, the Journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the Journal is now adopted. Madam Clerk, you never have to apologize. We appreciate you for all your time and your service to the citizens of Baltimore. Now, we're going to move on. Communications from the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. We will now move on to executive nominations. Clerk, if you could, please read the first nomination.
EA 21-0066 Otis W. Freeman, Member Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, and that is our only executive nomination on tonight's agenda. So now, we will move Madam Clerk into bills to be introduced. If you could read the first bill in Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-0170 rezoning, 2508, 2510, 2510 and a half, 2512, 2514, 2516, 2518, 2520, 2522, 2524, 2526, 2530, 2532, 2534, 2536, 2538, 2540, 2542, 2544, 2546, 2548, 2610, 2612, 2616, 2622, 2624, 2626, 2628, 2630, 2632, 2634, 2636, 2638, 2640, 2642, 2644, 2646, 2648, 2650, 2652, 2654, 2656, 2658, Hartford Road and NWS Hartford Road, 172 feet southwest of Mont Pillar Street, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties both on Hartford Road as listed below and as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the C1 zoning district to the R6 zoning district. Sponsor Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for going through that arduous bill title. At this point, we don't normally do this for zoning, but I know this is such a unique one. Your councilwoman in the 14th District, Councilwoman Ramos, would you like to speak on behalf of this bill or no?
Just very briefly, it's, we believe that there was a mistake in transform on these two blocks, and so wanted to rezonate from C1 to R6. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. This resolution has been, no, this bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Corporation, sorry, Economic and Community Development Committee, it was being with BDC. Next up, Madam Clerk, if we could go to 21-0171, please.
City Council Bill 21-0171 zoning conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R7 zoning district variance 111, 811 Chauncey Avenue, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R7 zoning district on the property known as 811 Chauncey Avenue, block 3463A, lot 013C, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, and granting a variance from bulk lot area requirements. Sponsor Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. Now, on to the consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in section A on the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, and all is in favor of approving the consent calendar. Please say aye.
Aye.
For those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The consent calendar is now approved. We will now move on to bills on second reader. At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's, it's been moved and properly seconded to read short titles for remainder of the hearing. If I do not hear or see any unreadiness, we will be in short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Any questions, concerns, problems? There are not. We're going to move on to Economic Community Development. Madam Clerk, if you could read in 21-0083.
This will build 21-0083 franchise gas regulator, regulator station utility at Lower Goyens Falls Park.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I would like to recognize the Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. The hearing date for this bill, it was heard on October 19th, 2021. The bill is awaiting approval by the Board of Estimates. I move to hold the bill on second reader.
It's moved. Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. We hold this bill off to second reader. Hearing and seeing no unreadiness, it will be held for next meeting. Is there any concerns, questions, or problems out there? Hearing and seeing none, we will do that for the benefit of the public. This bill will be on the Board of Estimates' agenda on this Wednesday for approval. The request from the chair is to permit time for DLE process to complete before the council takes action on this bill without objection. Again, we will hold this bill until next meeting. We've gone through that process, so this bill will be heard at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could read in Council Bill 21-0098.
Council Bill 21-0098 zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to five dwelling units in the R8 zoning district variance 1100 West Lafayette Avenue.
Madam Vice President, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you. 21-0098 was heard on October 19th, 2021. Finding of facts are on council members' desk. I move finding of facts.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the facts have been moved as well as properly seconded. All is in favor of adopting the finding of the facts. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The finding of the facts are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Amendments are also on council members' desks. I move the amendments.
Second.
The amendments have been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor of adopting the committee amendments. Please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to move the bill forward as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is approved as amended. On to 21-0108, Madam Clerk.
This will build 21-0108 city property renaming James Mosher Elementary School to Billy Holiday Elementary School.
At this point, I yield the floor to Madam Vice President.
Thank you. 21-0108 was heard on October 26th, 2021. I move the bill is favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Bill's moved, been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. On to 21-0111, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill 21-011 zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R7 zoning district variance 2312 Utah Place.
Madam Clerk, if you could read in the bill number one more time.
Sure. Council Bill 21-0111.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I'd like to yield the floor to Madam Vice President. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 21-0111 was heard on, this bill was heard on October 19th, 2021. I move the finding of the facts.
Is there a second? The finding of facts have been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Finding of facts are adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I move the amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
The amendments have been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bill has been moved and properly seconded to move forward as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill is approved and printed for third reading. On to Council Bill 21-0116.
Council Bill 21-0116 rezoning, block 3518A, lot 001.
Madam Vice President, the Chair of the Committee, the floor is yours.
Bill number 21-0116 was heard on October 19th, 2021. I move the finding of facts.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to move forward the finding of the facts. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The finding of the facts are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill is favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bill's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, move this bill forward, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. On to 21-0059R, Madam Clerk.
Council Resolution 21-0059R approval for the exchange of a Class BD7 license to a Class A7 license, 604 Poplar Grove Street.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Vice President of this council. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. 21-059R was heard on October 26th, 2021. I move the bill is favorable.
Bill's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Bill's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor of moving this bill forward, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This resolution is adopted. Madam Clerk, on to 21-0060R.
Council Resolution 21-0060R approval for the exchange of a Class BD7 license to a Class A7 license, 1901 Edmonton Avenue.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 21-060R was heard on October 26th, 2021. I move the bill is favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bill's been moved. This resolution's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Those, please say nay. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. On to 21-0066R.
Council Resolution 21-0066R approval for the exchange of a Class BD7 license to a Class A7 license, 1609 Lawrence Street.
At this point, I'd like to ask the Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 21-066R was heard on October 26th, 2021. I move the bill is favorable.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is, this resolution is adopted. Madam Clerk, on to the next and final resolution.
Council Resolution 21-0067R approval for the exchange of a Class BD7 license to a Class A7 license for the use at 3351 Greymont Avenue.
Madam Vice President, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 21-067R was heard on October 26th, 2021. I move the bill is favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
This bill's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Now, Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to Education, Workforce, and Youth. If you could, please read in 21-0053R.
Council Resolution 21-0053R informational hearing at school lunches.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Stokes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. President, Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee had a hearing on October 21st, 2021. Council Resolution 21-0053R, I move the bill favorable.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor of moving this bill forward, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. And we're going on to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, please read in 21-0095.
Council Bill 21-0095 labor trafficking notice requirements.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on October 27th, 2021. There was a technical floor amendment that was sent to council members electronically, and this amendment was be, was introduced by the sponsor on behalf of the Law Department. It properly aligns the numbering and strikes lines 10 through 13 of the bill to make it actually fit law. So I move the floor amendment.
We take this at the desk as a friendly amendment. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting this floor amendment, please say aye.
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 All those opposed to adopting a floor amendment, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendment is adopted. Now, back to you, Chairman Conway.
I move the bill favorably as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to move the bill forward as amended, as amended. For those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. On to Council Resolution 21-0072R, Madam Clerk.
Council Resolution 21-0072R investigative hearing, district action plans, and focus patrol.
Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on October 27th, 2021. It was sponsored by myself, Councilman Conway, and the committee approved the bill as favorable. So I move the bill as favorable.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor of approving, adopting this resolution, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. This resolution is now adopted. Now, on to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could read in EA 21-0050.
EA 21-0050 Mia J. Bloom, Member Sustainability Commission.
I'd like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Oversight Committee met on October 21st, 2021, to consider 12 executive appointments, and we are moving them all favorable, and so I'd like to move Mia Bloom favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this nomination, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The nomination is approved. Madam Clerk, on to 21-51.
EA 21-0051 Donza Brown Jr., Member Commission on Sustainability.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I'd like to move this favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Costello's moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I heard you that time. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. On to 21-52, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0052 Regina T. Voice, Member Sustainability Commission.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the nomination, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. On to 21-53, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0053 Lisa Ferrato, Member Commission on Sustainability.
Mr. Chair, you have the floor.
I move the nomination favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor of approving the nomination, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. On to 21-54, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0054 William Bill Joyner III, MLMSW Member Commission on Sustainability.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the nomination, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved. On to 21-55, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0055 Nicolette A. Lusant, PhD, MBD, Member Commission on Sustainability.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Nomination is approved. On to 21-56, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0056 Anes Robb, Member Commission on Sustainability.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
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 For those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. On to 21-57, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0057 Bryant Smith, Member Commission on Sustainability.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second.
Second.
They moved and properly seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. On to 21-58, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0058 Stephanie Smith, Member Commission on Sustainability.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved. Madam Clerk, on to 21-59.
EA 21-0059 Ben Zaitchak, Member Commission on Sustainability.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor of approving nomination, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. On to 21-60, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0060 Daytona Reed, Civil Service Commission.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the nomination, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. On to the last, executive nomination, that's 21-61, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0061 Olivia Farah, Member Commission on Aging and Retirement Education.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. On to Ways and Means, we're going to read in Council Bill 21-0091, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill 21-0091 Sella Property, Block 6997, Lot 002.
At this point, I'd like to recognize the Chair of Ways and Means, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. On to 21-121, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill 21-0121 American American Rescue Plan Funds Performance Oversight.
I'd like to recognize the Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. You were the chief sponsor of this. I want to defer back to you in case you have any remarks before making a motion.
Uh, well, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you for that. Uh, wasn't prepared to kind of give any remarks. I think we've talked about this, uh, for the past couple of months. Um, the importance of six hundred and forty-one million dollars of, uh, money that the city of Baltimore is receiving from the federal government, uh, to help relieve, um, our citizens in our city and our communities, uh, from coming out of COVID nineteen. We've consistently talked about the importance of not spending the money, but investing the money, ensuring that in five, ten, fifteen years, we could look back at this time, uh, as a time that, uh, we moved in the right direction. Um, I think that once we get a chunk of money in six hundred and forty-one million dollars, uh, might seem like a lot of money. But with a big city, with big city problems, sprinkling it throughout, uh, organizations and communities and the city, uh, without a concerted effort, um, could be potentially problematic. And we would not necessarily see the type of transformative change that we all want from this money. Uh, this ordinance just, um, allows for more engagement of the council and partnership with the council and the administration, to ensure that we're driving as much transparency as possible to the citizens of Baltimore, the ultimate taxpayers. So, uh, it provides, uh, things like monthly reporting to ensure that key performance indicators have been vetted and communicated to the council, as well as laying out goals and objectives associated with what's the return on investment associated with this particular money. So at this time, uh, Mr. Chair, I will turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The eyes have it, the bill is approved. I'd like this, at this point, turn it back over to the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to suspend Rule twelve-one to advance, uh, a bill from second to third meeting around the same day, specifically Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one two one, American Rescue Plan Funds Performance Oversight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Having, having been moved and properly seconded, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Bullock, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The eyes have it, this bill will move to third reading today. Bill's on third reading today. We're going to jump right into it. The first is city, um... As we look into, uh, the third, uh, reading for final passage, um, again, we require the implication of City Council Rule twelve-one, same-day advancement. The clerk will read the bill and call the roll. Madam Clerk, if you could read the bill, twenty-one dash one two one.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one two one. American Rescue Plan Funds Performance Oversight. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill is approved. We turn, we'll turn now on to additional third reading bills for final passage in regular order. Uh, the clerk will read the bill and call the roll. Madam Clerk, if you could go into twenty-one dash seven.
Twenty-one dash zero zero seven one. Street Encroachment seventeen oh seven, Eastern Avenue. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Okay, twenty-one dash one hundred, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, twenty-one dash zero zero nine zero, Madam.
Twenty-one dash zero zero nine zero. City streets, closing Eating Street and four ten-foot alleys bounded by Druid Hill Avenue, Gold Street, Division Street, and Baker Street. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash one hundred.
Twenty-one dash zero one zero zero. City property. Grant of easements. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one two six. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Board of Elections, six hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Uh, we will move on to the next bill, uh, just for informational purposes to the general listening audience. Citizens, we're going over the supplementary, uh, bills provided from the administration. You're going to hear a lot of reading, and it's going to be quiet. I think it's a total of twenty-eight bills. Uh, but these are supplementary bills, supplemental bills that move, uh, money from one entity or aspect that was approved in a budget to something else. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could read in, uh, Bill twenty-one dash one two seven X.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one two seven. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of General Service, six hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one two eight. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of General Service, twelve thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars and two cents. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one two nine. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of General Service, three million one hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one three zero. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of Health. Eight million nine hundred thirty-three. Not... Eight million nine hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars and six cents. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one three one. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of Health. Twenty-two million six hundred twenty thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one three two. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of Health. Fifteen million two hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one three three. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of Housing and Community Development. Four million three hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby. Co- Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one three four. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of Planning. Seven million one hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one three five. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of Planning. Five million one hundred seven thousand... Four hundred twenty dollars. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one three six. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of Public Works. Six hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one three seven. Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Department of Public Works. One million six hundred thirty thousand fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one three eight supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Fire Department, two million, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one three nine supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Fire Department, one hundred fourteen thousand, nine dollars. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one four zero supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Fire Department, twelve million, six hundred eighty four thousand, four hundred seventy one dollars and thirty three cents. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one four one supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Liquor License Board, one hundred four thousand, two hundred sixty four dollars and seventeen cents. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one four two supplementary general fund operating appropriate appropriation, Morality, five fifty thousand, three hundred four dollars and ninety cents. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one four three supplementary general fund operating appropriate appropriation, Morality Related Civic Promotion, five million dollars. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one four four supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Morality Related Convention Center Hotel, two million, five hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one four five supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Morality Related Convention Center, one million, four hundred ninety nine thousand, five hundred nine dollars and seventy four cents. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one four six supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Morality Related Educational Grants, four million dollars. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one four seven supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Morality Related Miscellaneous General Expenses, seven million, two thousand, six hundred, thirty seven dollars and six cents. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one four eight supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Morality Related Office of Children and Family Success, seven million, three hundred, eighty three thousand, two hundred forty nine dollars. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one four nine supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Morality Related Office of Information and Technology, eight hundred fifty seven thousand, five hundred nine dollars and thirty seven cents. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one five zero supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Morality Related Office of the Inspector General, four hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Onto the next, Bill Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one five one supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Police Department, six million, five hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey.
No.
Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Please note that I am abstaining from uh twenty one dash one zero one five two as I was doing second reader. This bill has been approved. Madam Clerk, please read in the final and last supplementary bill.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one two. Council Bill twenty one dash zero one five two supplementary general fund operating appropriation, State's Attorney's Office, six hundred thirty eight thousand, nine hundred sixty three dollars and sixty seven cents. President Mosby.
Staying there.
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now we're on to the last and final bill. Sorry, I jumped the gun. Twenty one dash one five three, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty one dash zero one five three supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Morality Related Employees Retirement Contribution, thirty five million, five hundred thousand dollars. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Please give a huge round of applause for our amazing Madam Clerk. We would have waited uh twenty more minutes, Madam Clerk, at the beginning because we knew the job that you had in front of you and you did a flawless job. So thank you so much. For again going through that very arduous process. If there's a way of working with the uh law department uh and sticking with legislative efficiency but also full transparency to the to um the constituents, we'll try to work on developing a more up to date way of reading all of those uh bills uh in the future. We'll we'll see next year. Uh at this point, we're gonna go into committee announcements. Uh chairs, when you hear a committee, please proceed with any announcements. The first committee, uh we're gonna go to the Vice President of this council and Chair of Economic Community Development, uh Chairwoman, Madam Vice President, Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee will hold the following public hearings virtually on Webex. And um I have a kind of an extensive list here because it's uh covering um some of November and December. Um on eleven oh nine twenty one at two P M, uh bill number twenty one dash oh one oh nine, which is city property renaming Carrollton uh Elementary Middle School to Catherine Johnson Global Academy and the sponsor is Councilman Bullock. On eleven sixteen twenty one at two P M, bill number twenty one dash zero one two two, franchise installation of five utilities, duck, duck banks. And that's um the sponsor is the president for the administration and specifically Department of Transportation. A- also on eleven sixteen twenty one at two oh five P M, bill number twenty one dash oh one two three, a franchise underground conduit and fiber op- optic cables. Um on behalf uh the president or behalf of the administration for Department of Transportation. Also on eleven sixteen twenty one at two ten P M, twenty one, bill number twenty one dash oh one one seven. And that's the termination of administrative parking regulations, peak hour parking restrictions. Sponsor Councilwoman Ramos. On twelve seven twenty one at two P M, bill number twenty one dash zero zero eight seven, and that's rezoning one hundred East Twenty Third Street, twenty three hundred Saint Paul Street, twenty three oh five Saint Paul Street, twenty um three thirteen Saint Paul Street and twenty three seventeen pa- uh Saint Paul Street. And that's the sponsor is Councilman Stokes. Also on twelve seven twenty one at two oh five P M, bill number twenty one dash oh one one nine, and that's rezoning twelve oh one South Haven Street and a portion of Boston Street, and the sponsor is Councilman Cohen. Also on twelve seven twenty one at two ten P M, bill number twenty one dash oh one two oh, and that's the Urban Renewal Canton Industrial Area Amendment. And again, the sponsor is Councilman Cohen, their companion bills. On twelve fourteen twenty one at two P M, bill number twenty one dash oh one five six, and that's zoning condi- uh conditional use parking lot, twelve oh seven and twelve oh nine East Forty Third Street and twelve oh four Springfield Avenue, sponsor President Mosby. Also, and finally, on twelve fourteen twenty one at two oh five P M, bill number twenty one dash oh one oh two, and that's building permits disposal plan requirement the John F. Chambers Senior Act, and that's by Councilman, sponsor Councilman Torrance. Thank you, Mr. President. You're on mute.
Thank you for that. Uh thank you, Madam Vice President. At this point, we're gonna turn to Education, Workforce and Youth. Uh Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce and Youth Committee is reconvene- convening a legislative oversight hearing, L zero, L zero, L O two one dash zero zero seven for the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund on Thursday, November the nineteen, eighteen, beginning at ten, ten A M. Representatives from the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund will come before the committee to give an update on the state of the state of and activities associated with the fund. The last hearing was held on April the twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. Also, the committee will also hold quarter- quarterly oversight hearings for the Baltimore City Rec- Recreation Park, which is called REC twenty twenty five, the strategic strategic plan for the purpose of inviting the director of recreation parks to update the city council on the em- em- to the uh can't get it out, of the park and the recs twenty twenty five strategic strategic plan. The first hearing will be held on Thursday, January sixth, twenty twenty two, beginning at ten A M. Recreation twenty twenty five, also known as REC twenty twenty five, is Baltimore City Recreation Park's five years strategic plan to sustain, re- re- uh ing- rate and expand Baltimore's park and recreation resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now on to Health, Environment and Technology. Uh Madam Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. No announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the Public Safety and Government Operations, uh Chairman, uh Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a handful here. Um the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, November tenth, twenty twenty one to hear Bill L O twenty one dash zero zero one two, Baltimore City Fire Department E M T firefighter pre-employment screening and hiring process. This is sponsored by myself, Councilmember Conway. Um we will also be hearing, uh oh, excuse me. Uh that will be at uh one oh two P M virtually. Uh we'll be hearing Bill twenty one dash zero one zero six on Wednesday, November tenth at one oh three P M virtually, a study and report oversight of the Baltimore City Fire Department, sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. We'll be hearing Bill twenty one dash zero one zero seven on Wednesday, November tenth, twenty twenty one at one oh four P M virtually, uh and that's a study and report of the operations of the Baltimore City Fire Department, sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. Uh we'll be hearing Bill twenty one dash zero zero nine four on Wednesday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty one at two oh one P M virtually, uh and that's the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Establishment, sponsored by Councilmember Burnett. Uh we'll he- we'll hear uh Bill L O twenty one dash zero 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 six on Wednesday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty one, at one P M uh virtually. And that's the Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan, sponsored by myself, Councilmember Conway. And last but not least, uh we'll hear Bill twenty one dash zero zero four zero R on Wednesday, December fifth, twenty twenty one, uh at one oh one P M virtually. Uh it's an informational hearing on the crime prevention through environmental design. Um and that's sponsored by myself, Councilmember Conway. Thank you, Mr. President. You're muted.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. Next, we're gonna go to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Uh Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on November fourth at one P M uh for continuation of investigative hearing for the water billing system. Uh we will also hold a hearing on E A twenty one dash zero zero six three on November eighteenth, twenty twenty one at two P M uh for Dr. Yvonne Bonner, Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh and we will also hold a hearing on E A twenty one dash zero zero six four on November eighteenth um at two oh one P M for Odessa Dorkins, Member of Commission of Aging and Retirement. Uh we'll also hold a hearing on E A twenty one dash zero zero six five on November eighteenth, twenty twenty one at two oh two P M for Claudia Baylog, Member of Commission of Aging and Retirement. We'll also hold a hearing on E A twenty one dash zero zero six six, November eighteenth, twenty twenty one at two oh three P M. And that is for Otis Freeman, uh member of the B M Z A. And E A twenty one dash zero zero six two on November eighteenth at two oh five for Alice Kennedy, Commissioner, uh Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh we will also hold a hearing on uh C C twenty one dash zero one two five on December second, twenty twenty one at two oh five uh P M, and that is for uh trespass towing revisions uh introduced by Councilmember Dorsey. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Chairman Schleifer. And last but certainly not least, Councilman, Ca- uh Chairman Costello, uh of Ways and Means, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November ninth, nine fifty nine A M on Council Bill twenty one dash zero one five four, sale of property, twelve oh one North Rosedale Street. Mr. President, I move to suspend Rule ten two uh to announce a hearing.
If there are no objections, we're gonna uh suspend Council Rule ten dash two. Hearing and seeing no objections or unreadiness, uh ten dash two is suspended. Uh Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November ninth at ten A M. Council Bill twenty one dash zero one six seven, High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Tax Credit Citywide Application Extension. Mr. President, I move to suspend Rule ten two to announce a hearing.
Uh there's a motion on the floor to suspend Rule two dash ten. Uh hearing, seeing no objections, we will suspend Rule two dash ten. I do not see any unreadiness or any objections. Rule two dash ten is now suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November ninth at ten oh one A M. Council Bill twenty one dash zero one six eight, tax credits, historic properties, application extension. Mr. President, I move to suspend Rule ten two to announce a hearing.
Again, looking to suspend Rule uh ten dash two. If there are any objections, please let me know. Hearing and seeing not no unreadiness, Rule two dash, ten dash two is now suspended. Uh Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November ninth at ten oh two A M. Council Bill twenty one dash zero one six nine, High Performance Newly Constructed Longest Tax Credit Application Extension. Uh Mr. President, the Ways and Means Committee uh will also be holding a hearing on Tuesday, November ninth uh on Legislative Oversight twenty one dash zero 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 three. Uh the Bureau of Budget and Management Research will now be starting at ten thirty A M instead of ten A M. And Baltimore City Public Schools will be starting at eleven A M instead of ten thirty A M. And this is first quarter projections for fiscal year twenty twenty two. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh Mr. Chair. Uh that concluding our committee announcements, on to regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements at this time? I would like to call to the gentle lady from the fourteenth district, Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Uh I have two announcements. One is um I wanted to thank the Education, Youth um and Workforce Committee for uh hearing our students uh talking about their uh uh issues and concerns with um with uh school lunches. I think the work that the students did to prepare and their work and their testimony, we should make us all proud um of our students um in our schools. They did a wonderful job and we will be continuing to work with them um on this particular issue. Uh so I just wanted to to reiterate to the committee my thanks and also uh hope that um the public will listen to that hearing because you'll be very impressed with our students, um our high school students. Um and then second, um this uh this today uh is the Day of the Dead, uh Dia de los Muertos. Uh just as an education around what this is, it's a wonderful holiday uh in the Mexican tradition uh to honor those who have passed uh but to celebrate their lives. Um and uh we uh there were lots of activities over the weekend. Um and uh it's a really great um holiday and I had posted uh some information about it if people are interested. I'm also wearing my Dia de los Muertos jacket that I got from Mexico.
Let's see it. Stand up. Let's see.
There it is.
All right.
Beautiful, very well embro- it's beautifully embroidered and um wonderful, so. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for uh giving us the uh education on that. We appreciate that. Are there any additional questions or concerns out there? I see the uh the deputy councilman in the ninth district keeps popping his head in, uh but he won't stay there long enough for me to announce his presence. Um are there any additional uh council uh regular announcements?
Just, just one quickly before we, I guess, close out.
I was waiting because I know you always have one, so it's, you know.
Just, um.
Between you and Councilwoman Ramos, we knew, we know that we're gonna get one out of you, so. What is it, Madam P P?
You know, we're um uh doing murals around our city is just a very important piece of preserving history throughout our districts and on October twenty third, we had a wonderful celebration of the unveiling of the mural in remembrance of the work of George E. Mitchell um at the former Langser- Langston Hughes Elementary School, which is now Langston Hughes Business Community and Resource Center. And any, anyone, if you get a chance and go down uh Rice's Town Road, take a look of that wonderful mir- mural just depicting the work that he has done and uh continues to leave a a legacy for. And it's a great um view there now because remember that school is kind of directly across from that Northwest transfer station, so it just gives some added um beautiful ambiance of that area as well. Uh just wanted to um do a shout out for that.
No, thank you. Uh the mural is absolutely beautiful. It seems like it's three D. It jumps out of the building, so. Uh thank you for all your leadership with the center and promoting uh Mr. uh Georgia's legacy. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Vice President Sharon Green Middleton. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Vice President Sharon Green Middleton to close this out.
The next meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at five P M virtually. And may we continue to do a moment of silence for the family and victims of homicide in this city. Year to date, we have now two hundred and eighty-four homicides. We have one thousand, two hundred and twenty-one cumulative deaths from COVID, and we also pray for our families that continue to suffer from the opioid epidemic. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're going to give a moment of silence right now. There being no further business before the desk, this will include our twenty-first meeting on the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.